Free, I guess we're going to call the public hearing to order even though it's not too public. And the first one that's on the agenda, as I think about it for a minute, is the Monarch Conditional Use Modification and looking around and realizing that there's nobody here, do we go forward with the presentation?
Yeah.
People watching from the public hearing.
Okay, so Tom, could you make a quick presentation for the video if nothing else?
Very quick.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm Tom Hammond from Civil Consultants, representing Monarch Mountain. Mike, that Larry is here with me to see what we are showing.
It says it's right behind me, so if you don't want to hold that.
What we're doing is asking for a revision to the finding, to the approval for Monarch's excavation permit. And what I've got in front of me here are the original approvals, couple of plans, shows how the pit was going to be excavated, what the phasing was, with a number of conditions on how they could operate the permit. One of those conditions was that a crusher could only be operated in there for 15 days per year. And as they've operated the facility, they find that it would be a much better operation for them if they could have a limit of 800 hours a year for a crusher. They are only crushing materials from their own site, and the materials they're crushing basically are only for their own facility, packaging facility in Brooklyn, New Hampshire. So it's the long trucks that are coming in hauling them out, and basically that's it. The plan we've got up here, we have the plan with the cross-section.
It's on the second page.
I think you had it up there a minute ago. Okay, so essentially, this is a cross-section of the site, and what it indicates is the location of the crusher, which is right in the middle of the screen at this point. It shows the access road coming up, and then if you go all the way to the left of the screen, it shows where it comes down into the main highway 109. We're approximately 1,300 feet from the crusher location to the highway, 1,300 feet over to the nearest property on the left-hand side, and approximately 600 feet to the rear property line, which is the high dotted line on the right-hand side of the screen. The crusher will sit down inside a depression, it's had berm built around it, as you can see by the dotted line, it says top of berm with an elevation on it. Crusher will be in there, they will bring materials into that area, and the crusher will be fed by a backhoe. The planning board has been up there and done a site lock, taken a look at the operation, listened to the sound it was generating in two or three different locations, one down close to 109, one just behind the mound where it says something road.
Hall road.
Hall road, and found that the sound levels there were acceptable per your ordinance. Inside, we came down very close to the crushers, those sound levels down inside the hole where the crusher were, planning board correct me if I'm wrong, but those were just about the limit of what the sound could be at a property line by your ordinance. I believe that's 60 decibels, and we were getting to 60, 63, 64, standing a couple hundred feet away from the crusher down in the hole. So basically, that's what we're asking for, is a modification to the approval for this operation, to allow them to operate a crusher for up to 800 years, 800 hours a year. The hours of operation would be between 8 o'clock and 4 o'clock, they wouldn't operate before 8, they wouldn't operate after 4 o'clock with a crusher. Basically, they are only crushing their own materials on site, nothing would be brought in from our site to be crushed. Pretty much that's it. In some ways, it's a fairly quiet operation, it isn't as though we have a quarry where they've got a jaw breaking up, three-foot diameter stones into smaller pieces all the way down, they're basically working with very small stones that they're going to be packaging and selling for landscaping operation, quickly. I think basically that's it. Did anyone see anything, Mike? They do not have a crusher that they own now, they have rented a crusher, we had that crusher in there running at that point, if they were to put a crusher back in there, or a crusher, which they'll do if they get approval, it would be the same crusher basically that they will be using, so, and that's it.
Any questions out there? You know, we'll come back to this when we hit to our meeting and go forward with it, but while Tom's up here, any questions anyway?
I read down 9 to 3, but are you looking at 8 to 4 for hours?
That's correct, that's what we had in the application. We said 8 hours a day, typically it'd be 8 to 4. That they wouldn't operate outside those hours, that doesn't mean they'd be crushing that whole 8 hours, but those would be the time.
Are you thinking the same level of employees?
Yes, I mean eventually it'd be nice to hire another loader operator or something like that, for the time being, yes, there's only three of us there.
I think Ken can vouch for this, they have been running a very good operation there.
Oh yeah.
I think if the planning board went out and took a look at that operation, they could see that it was well managed, well operated.
I mean, the only high level of decibels we get is from the backup alarms, and those are required for OSHA, I mean that was the loudest noise we heard.
And I think what's important to note too is, we're not talking about any expanded trucking use, we're only talking about the crusher. As far as the other conditional uses came from, you know, the earlier time, a couple of years ago, when we voted on the conditional uses. So in our minds, basically, we're talking about one thing, and that's the crusher. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll come back to this when we open up our meeting, and I guess unless somebody quickly has something, I'm going to close the public hearing part of this and move on to the second public hearing. Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, the second public hearing, we have the proposed amended changes and a series of them. And if I have it right, I lost track of what was first. I believe the first one is the timber harvest. Do you want to take us through that, Ken? Because Steve might be here actually.
So this is playing up what we worked on last year, allowing timber harvesting in the resource protection, the state standard. We were hoping to go to with the town, have an additional resource protection, it was still too confusing, we weren't able to go to state standards, so this would allow timber harvesting in the local resource protection and bring it along with state standards.
And nobody, everybody's on board with all of this, I believe, you know, we've been through this quite often over the last four, five, six months, and this is really kind of what we finally came to a decision about, with the help of Steve and...
Oliver.
Oliver, the guy from the state, yes. All good? Okay, moving on to the second one, for, I guess in your folder, might be the pink-ish color one, the ADU. The idea here is to allow an accessory dwelling that would be used for, you know, the old time thought of it is that it was done for hen loss, or perhaps kids kind of a deal. We're not going to try and establish that kind of a condition, you know, our thoughts are that it's something that we perhaps want to add to our ordinances and refer to it for anybody who wants to come in, to a single one. You want to add to that too, Ken?
It's somewhat deregulating, basically. Currently, if you wanted a two-family in our apartment, ADU, you would need to meet the minimum standard of the zoning plus 50%, which it's still, we tried to adjust the ordinance about 10, 12 years ago, and it's still too restricted, we haven't seen anybody use it yet, so as we're seeing a lot of the parents coming back to live with the kids, or the kids coming back to live with the parents, we're getting a lot of requests for it, and the ADU seems like an easy aspect for it.
Noting that it's not allowed in the resource protection, the shoreline, or in the lawsuit.
Correct.
Comments, questions? Moving forward. Next one is the non-conforming vacant lots. The horse and pony show is good to go. So that would be the yellow one.
So this allowed if you had an existing vacant lot that got merged to your regular lot in the shoreline zone, you were able to drag a deed out that was 30, 40, 50 years old, whoever knows how long it's been there, and just recreate the lot, circumventing paying taxes on it in the last few years. Oddly enough, it was only permitted in the shoreline zone.
So essentially, we're just crossing it all out?
Correct.
Questions, comments? Moving on, the green. Mineral exploration.
So this, we're looking at the gravel pits, the non-permitted ones in town. It's been interpreted that you could do 10,000 yards a year and not need conditional use permits. The town attorney's looked at that and thought it has been misinterpreted for years, and we're just trying to clean that up, allowing the filling, moving, or moving activities, but not actually having a mineral extraction industry. That would be dropping it, or raising it, basically up to 1,000 yards without a permit.
Extractive or extraction?
There are two. There's the exploration, two of that gets confused, or the two. Oddly enough, you needed a permit for the exploration more than, I think it was 10 yards, 100 yards, which nobody's ever committed to got one.
So in the chart, is that, do you mean to say extractive, or do you mean to say extraction?
And that's what we're saying, it is. So we just change it to...
Guys? Is this where we were talking about including the term ledge?
And that's a new, it's not underlined.
I put the new one in the application, that's the only one, did you not get?
312018. Put that one bottom.
Yeah, that's mine.
I did.
If you look on your paragraph 5.9 and 5.9.2, you're using the extractive, we're there again, I don't know which is the proper one.
That's right. Extractive is correct there, or extraction?
The ordinance is extractive.
So it stays at there, it says?
Now we can't change that.
Right, then underlined in bold. So if you look, that's the date for the last one.
Anything that changed?
They changed it, they changed it.
Yeah.
We were not saying, extractive, extraction, industrial.
Okay, so we good then, extractive stays, and the upper part, extraction goes on the chart, based on what was in the older ordinance. Word for word, it has to be moved over as it is.
But you want extractive, new like, extraction?
In the chart, because that's where it was, in the chart.
Yeah, because we're not against those, changing, we're just trying to have the chart.
All good there?
Do we want to stick with industry, we don't want to go back to industrial? I think that's what caused the change of the extractive, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
We can go back to what we initially had, mineral extraction industrial, or go to the lawyer, mineral extractive industry for a public hearing. I think it's more of a...
Yeah.
I'd say industrial, that way they would not touch it, we're just striking out.
We're just going to keep it the way it is, in current, or as it works, okay? So mineral extraction industrial?
Industrial.
Is that where we're at?
But we're going to get rid of the word industrial.
Can we? Can we without Tom?
Exactly. Well, I was looking at the definition.
Extraction, it's mineral extract.
I go back, anywhere the ledge on the permit required. In that definition, where it's underlined in bold?
In two places, under the definition on the front, and then on the back with the green, under permit required, you're adding what to two places?
So what's the decision here on the chart?
Exactly.
Extractive, extraction.
Industry is off through the ordinance. It's just not, it's just not on the chart, so change the chart to industry? Did you easily do that?
I'll say mineral extraction, actually it does already.
Industry.
Yeah. So industrial, it's in the land use chart, doesn't match up to what's in the ordinance itself.
It's not like we're changing definitions of words, I mean, they're both referring to the same thing.
Right, so we're just changing the typo on extraction.
In our minds.
Industry. Yeah.
We're going to extractive, industry. All right, any other comments then, on the proposed ordinance changes? Then as far as we're concerned, we can send this upstairs and we can move forward with it for the June, the June meeting. Great. I think we've got them all. All right, so the public hearing then is closed, and we're about to open up our regular planning board meeting, and if you haven't had a chance to look at the minutes, please do that now, and then I would be looking for votes, or motion.
So your March 15 minutes would have to change to reflect the 8 hours per day in the 8 to 4 instead of 9 to 3.
Is that what it says?
I have it at 8 to 4.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
The minutes are different? The minutes say 9 to 3, I think we did, let's talk 9 to 3, I wrote down a 9 in my notes, 2 to 9 to 3.
Oh, I see, I do have it 9 to 3 up there, but 8 to 4.
Are the hours of the site 8 to 4, but they had said that by the time they got the crusher up and running, and then time to close it down would be 9 to 3?
Well, the only point is, the minute should reflect what the approval was.
Right, but, okay, I wrote 9 to 3 in my notes, too.
Well, let's get through the minutes, and then we're going to bring the operation up as one of the first things on the agenda. And I guess when we get to the motion somewhere over there, if we need to make a correction on what we have for minutes, and then we can discuss it when we get to the...
How many questions?
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, additions or corrections? The correction to the minutes, do we feel that we need to make a change in the direction of the correction in the minutes, or are you content with that? I wasn't here at the meeting, I listened to it, watched it, but not the same thing. We good, or we, what do we think? I mean, whether or not the minutes state something doesn't necessarily mean when we get to the conditions that that's what we're going to do.
Right.
So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if you're okay with it, you guys who were here at the meeting, then we can leave the minutes as is, and then go forward with the discussion of the, of the operation itself.
No issue.
Okay, all right, all those in favor of the minutes as discussed? All right, so that's passed.
Five votes.
Okay, so that being done, let's move to the regular agenda of the regular meeting, and what we're now going back to is the conditional use changes for the crusher in the Monarch quarry down on 109. So, just based on what Tom had to say before, comments from anybody? Questions?
Just for clarification, it's 7 to 5 is their current approved hours of operation, Monday to Friday, and 8 to noon Saturday, and nothing on Sundays, and then the crusher's allowed 8 to 4, October 1st to May 1st, 15 days excluding weekends.
Okay, so the original conditions of the crusher, the one we voted on two years ago, set the hours of weekday between 8 and 4.
And that's what you're asking for now, right? Weekdays 8 to 4?
Yeah.
Just get rid of the October to May.
What we said is 800 hours, that it wouldn't operate continually, we have 800 hours, which is about half of the time.
It was 6 hours, it doesn't mention 6 hours a day, right? That's not written there.
Well, I think we may have confused that a little bit, we also mentioned 9 to 3 in the application, we said it would operate at 4, and if that was a step up, they could go to a lower, they could go 9 to 3 to 6 hours, that's actually what was put in the application. They would certainly have the 8 to 4, and it doesn't mean that they start at 7, when the maintenance or the machines get ready to go, and it starts at 8.
The, I had gone over to the site after the site visit, and a couple of the notes that I wrote down at that point was hearing anyway, that when you people who had gone to the original site visit, that the decibel level was, was in the range of what it should be, below the 60 decibels that Tom was referring to before. And as I said earlier, no expanded trucking use, that the pit was deep, wide, and the machinery will be located there doing the scaling and doing the crushing in that pit. And that's when, apparently you guys were all there, and when you were standing out by 109, could barely hear the crusher. I mean, I guess I'm asking that more than stating that, is that what your sense was when you were there?
I think at the office, you have a highway more, in the wind, directional wind, leaves on the tree.
And I also thought that, I think it was Mike who had mentioned to me when we were out there, that the property lines are, either have been totally redefined or defined, or are in the process of being marked, I guess right now, so that the, the butters on the backside will be marked as to where, where the land is. Those are basically just the things that I wrote down after going out there. I did receive a letter from a Edward Meyer, and I'm going to read that for a second anyway. It says, "Thanks for the opportunity to voice my concerns about the mountain minerals and aggregates. My wife and I purchased a camp on a smaller lake for the peace and tranquility." Okay, it says, "Even with the limited work schedule now in effect," he says, "He can hear the noise from the machines being used on the property. One concern that he has is the amount of additional trucks coming and going from the sand pit." But we just basically said that there will be no additional trucks, because we've already done that conditional use, and those amounts of trucks will not change. "The jake breaks are noisy, and large trucks speeding down the road make it very dangerous for me and my family members, frantically coming and going from a property. There are many unknowns that arise from this request. I fear that mountain minerals will potentially start using the location to bring additional material and prolong the activity there, as well as lower our property value. I strongly oppose a modification, and am pleading with the board not to grant the permit. I appreciate your review of my opinions due to the impact that this permit would have on the lake's devoted inhabitants and our quality of life." So I throw that out there, as far as I know, it's the only written note that we have gotten. Anybody else get anything else? Okay. And it seems that one of his main concerns, we've already really addressed, not changing. Perhaps the idea of the trucks and using the jake brakes, maybe you guys could address that, is that something that happens routinely? Perhaps the idea of the trucks and using the jake brakes, maybe you guys could address that. Is that something that happens routinely?
I don't know. I'm not driving in the trucks with them, but I'm sure they have jake brakes in them and if, you know, I can tell them not to use their jake brakes first thing in the morning when they're coming up and down the road, you know?
Right.
I think maybe when they come to that, usually, like right now the roads are posted, so they're coming out this way. Normally, they go through New Hampshire. They're on Main Road for, what is it, not even five minutes, three minutes? And they're in New Hampshire, you know?
Okay, any other questions, comments from anybody? And if that's the case, are we ready to move on to a vote in set conditions or whatever?
1,900 feet. And I think when you're coming from this way, they're probably not using the engine brakes as much as they would in this area.
Coming around that corner right there.
That scrub right through there.
I followed two trucks this afternoon and there was no noise from those trucks.
No more than any logging truck or anything else that's going down the road, you know?
Quieter than the Harley, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, quieter than a Harley.
I have followed them a number of times on 125 and I would agree with the same thing.
They knew modern equipment, so. And we have, working for Quikrete, we have very strict rules. These guys aren't allowed to be on cell phones. If they go on cell phones, immediate termination with these truck drivers. So it's not like, you know, some other company driving down the road, if they get caught, it's immediate termination. Doesn't matter if it's a DOT thing or me catching them on the phone while they're driving, they're terminated. So they're very safety oriented, Quikretes.
Are there GPSs in the trucks?
I believe so, yes.
I would think so.
Yes, we have, the trucking boss has some kind of monitoring thing they do.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I remember last time we talked about just working on revegetation. This area right here, you must, it's kind of like a road right here that comes up. Do you use that for anything right now?
Not right now. We do, we drive up in there and check the property and stuff like that.
Right.
So we were talking about planting some trees.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you, this area right here, if you'd use that for anything?
Not right now, we're not.
Because there is good material up there though. Oh, like you potentially might go and...
Maybe years down the road.
Extract from that area again in the future? Potentially. How about back here?
Right now where we are is more than sufficient.
How about back here? What's going on back there?
This has nothing to do with this approval. What you're doing now, he has an approval to run his pit, all right? And beyond that, it's code enforcement that comes in to make sure it's done properly. This approval we're asking for is to operate those crushers. It has nothing to do with the revegetation on the other side of the pit, sorry.
Okay, well, I mean, I could talk more about the crusher if you wanted me to, but I'm interested in the vegetation personally. It's like, you get something you want, I get something I want. That's how I'm kind of...
Okay, it's not the way it operates, stop.
Well, last time there's been some openness to that. We haven't put the question out there much.
I'm sorry?
I think it is, I'm just curious about those areas.
Last time, at the end of the last week Gavin had asked, can we talk a little about the vegetation and I think that they didn't open it.
I don't think we said yes at that point, okay? You know, I'm a little bit upset about it because I was in here with another pit at one point. We had it all done. We left and we got a condition put on our plan of revegetation, all right? We've also spoken tonight about the thing we're doing is we're talking about the crusher. This other stuff is, has nothing to do, revegetation has nothing to do with the crusher, sorry. I just, I think we're wrong to reopen it.
So when we were looking at the crusher, you were running material through that was mixed with fine sand and sediment as well? Was like a mixture of material?
Yeah, well, was that typical of what you're going to be putting through the crusher on a daily basis? Well, what it is, is it's... Sorry about this.
No, no problem. I was just wondering what was going on in the area.
So what happens typically, what we're running is the tailings off the screener plant. So we run, run the sand through the screener, screen out the sand and the rocks and that is the tailings off. So if there's sand mixed in with the... Then, you know, I mean, there's, it gets a little mixed in and you're scooping it out of the hole and you throw it over there.
When you, so you put it through the screener first?
Yeah.
So you would end up with a pile of cobbles that you might at some point put through the crusher as well?
Yeah, that's what you...
And that was the next one, only when we went there we...
I can't talk right now. All right, I'm going to play back.
Like when we watched the crusher operating and listened to the decibels, it was putting that mixed material through?
That was all...
Can you think it would affect the sound if you were putting like the bigger cobbles through only, you know, from a screener? Do you think that would affect it?
That was all cobbles from the screener.
Okay.
The screener sits above that hole and we took all the tailings and we threw the tailings into that hole. That...
So the bigger rocks were mixed into the...
They were mixed in with it.
So you wouldn't end up, there wasn't going to be putting through...
There wasn't rocks as big as, I mean, we're not crushing, we can't crush rocks as big as the door.
Right, up to two feet you said, right?
Yeah, you know?
So what I'm asking is like you wouldn't be putting straight rocks through at any one time. It would usually be mixed with the finer sediments as well.
Sometimes it's a little cleaner, sometimes it's a little dirty.
Right. The noise won't affect the sound.
It won't, it won't really change it.
Yeah.
You know, it's sitting down in that hole the way they sit, that jaw crusher, it's pretty quiet down in there, you know?
Yeah.
I could see if it was sitting out on the road, you wouldn't want four foot rocks dancing across, you know what I mean?
Right, it seems like it might come out or bigger ones in, but definitely not that.
But do you have some rocks in there that are, you know, softball size, football size, basketball size? You know, it's whatever's coming out of the ground. The bigger ones, we don't mess around with, they're too big. You know, some rocks in there as big as these tables that we're not crushing, we got a pile of them.
Any other comments?
Well, I'd like to come back to the revegetation. I'd still like to ask that we put it in as a condition that this area, it's about 10 or 11 acres in the front going from this, oh, I got my pointer here, from right here where we got our hard hats and that's right here. This is like a little pond right here. This would be kind of like the summit of the hill maybe and this is the slope. That this whole, it's about 10 or 11 acres right here, be revegetated with trees maybe. You would seed them in, instead of planting individual trees, you would, you know, spread pine cones and tree seeds out on that area. Would be a cheaper and effective way to cover the whole ground. So I'm still going to ask that the board put it in as a condition. And then we can put a timeframe on that, that maybe you have five years to establish a more sufficient vegetation there. You know, so you don't have to do it all this year and then, you know, we can look at it again in the future. You know, just based on Google Maps even, just to see how the revegetation is coming along, then in a couple of years, we look at that again and see how it's doing just to make sure that it is actually growing back and that some of these areas that I was trying to point out, like right here and up in here, that those areas are still growing at the north, not just the open sand.
Anybody else? Are we, do we have issues with the time? The eight to four versus the nine to three? There appears to be some issue as to which way we were going.
Personally, I don't think it's going to make a huge difference because they're probably only be running the crusher for a segment of the day or, I don't know. They're pretty similar hours.
I wasn't out there for the sidewalks, it was hard for me to say in terms of the sound, but the idea of a crusher at 8:00 AM sounds hard as well. If I'm on the lake across the street, but if the sound isn't reaching it.
And you guys who were there are all in agreement that the sound doesn't reach the road?
Not on the day that we were there because the, between the, pretty much the burn was, you keep, you know, you're like in a hole up above us. We were below the sound, the sound travels up, so we didn't really hear it from...
And the lake houses...
From this area right over there, we didn't hear it at all.
Those lake houses across the street over there would certainly be below it also.
That's quite a distance.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's what we figured. I mean, the closest property line is back here somewhere. Was 600 feet to the rear line was like, yeah, right in here somewhere, so. And there's no, there isn't really a residence right there as far as we know, maybe up here.
It's too bad we don't get more information from that guy about what equipment noise he's hearing. Is it?
I think it's the trucks. He was concerned about more trucks. He was concerned about the sound of the trucks. He didn't really, you know, doesn't really say there's a concern with the crushing, you know, with that sound.
It just says equipment noise, right?
Well, we've got no complaints over the past couple of years either.
Sure.
If it was a real problem, we would have complaints from the year-round residents or the season. Which one of those camps is he in?
Yes.
He's on 109, 2906. 2906, 109. His name is Meyer, N-E-I-R.
If the trucks are going to go left in the Hampshire, it shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
You could see how the truck would be coming around the corner, could be a little bit more noise there. Any truck coming around the corner, it's going to be more noise there.
Sure, sure.
But unless the roads are posted, they're coming out and going left and coming in from this way, so they're not even going by there. And unless you really know what you're looking at, the trucks going by your house, you don't know if they're pulling in there. I mean, unless they're aware which trucks are theirs. Are they going to straighten out that strip of road? It was proposed, I think this year, and I thought it got pushed back a little year. So I know they are working in, from the bypass area down into here.
Sometime before you finish the other page. All right, anybody else? Ready to make a decision?
In terms of, isn't that part that Gavin is talking about, is that already supposed to be revegetated, this part of the...
They get, you guys bonded through the state for how many acres to be open?
30.
30 acres? Yeah, so normally it's 10 acres, but then you subtract stockpiles and roads.
So is that part of their open space?
I don't know if they have 30 acres open yet.
There is not 30 acres.
It's on that proposed one, it had it broken up into open acreage. What's your total acreage open now?
I'd have to go back and look. I think we originally... We got six acres open on the left-hand side there, right behind your head. And the other one is approximately 11 acres, so it's about 17 acres that are open. And down below that, we're saying that replant area was approximately six acres.
Where is that six? Which one?
Up top.
He's got 11 here, six here, and replant six.
Okay, that's the area from here. What I see at the additions basically is they're just saying the original conditions going back in November of 15, that no topsoil is to leave the site, not as to the timeframe of the revegetation.
Is there a revegetation plan on there?
I'll see it in the minutes.
I think DEP was supposed to take care of that because they bonded with the DEP and not... Yeah, the biggest difference between, what I'm looking for and what the DEP asked for is that the DEP just asked for it to be revegetated, which could be grasses, not the native vegetation that was officially there. So the DEP might say this is already revegetated. Which I think was what we came up with last time.
And that was from the original, the original, original planning board decision, going back to trucks. My turks, I'll correct. All right, again, throw it out to you.
How do other people feel about the hours?
I don't think it's an issue.
I don't think it's an issue. I live over here in that area.
We're going to change the hours so they're not going to be crushing on Saturdays, but I think we agreed with that last time.
Monday through Friday?
Yeah, just Monday through Friday. Didn't agree with that last time, yeah. Other than that, yeah.
Monday through Friday, eight to four?
Yeah. So since the revegetation is controlled by the DEP?
Controlled by Quikrete, they can do whatever they want.
But the DEP is the one who's overseeing it. Am I correct with what you said earlier?
Well, yes, you're bonding with the DEP.
Okay, all right. So we're good with one condition, meaning that it's Monday through Friday, eight to four. Any other comments?
Is it already saying like one crusher on site?
Formal crusher operations limited to 15 days between October 1 and May 1. Excluding weekends, operations to be between hours of eight and four. Goes from probable crusher to less than 60 decibels at the property line. I think really we're just looking at striking out the 15 days between October 1 and May 1.
But just to have one crusher on site, not like...
I'm sure everybody agreed to putting that answer, you know, two crushers up there.
We had to when you guys came.
There was a jaw and a comb. Your jaw crushes into the comb.
It's one. But it was... But you call it one.
That's one operation.
They're doing one, one function. They act together to do the same, to create one function. So you wouldn't have two, two, no, not two setups like that.
Two, yeah, yeah, I mean, no, 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 no.
Yeah, they would be fine with that, I think, but...
Yeah, the same thing with that though. The permit is limited to 1,500 hours. So even, I don't think they'd ever bring in two.
Wait, 800 hours, see?
I'm sorry, 800, but if they did, but if they, I would say the 15 days, so if they did bring in two, then you're only going to have them there.
Right, half the number of times.
Right, it would make sense.
And you're in that confined area anyways, so there's no room for a second one. You're just being each other's way.
That makes sense.
But you are going to open that up, I think, what we said, right?
Yeah, my goal is in the next few years to even have the screening plant down in that hole. That's my goal.
Once it gets a little bigger, a little bit more room to move around.
Yeah, and that way, you know, because the screening plant, I know it's noisy up there and I want to get everything down on one level, everything working together. It just costs, my fuel cost will be cheaper, everything will be cheaper all the way around if I have everything on one surface.
Addiction and efficiency. Okay, again, throw it out there.
I keep trying. Wait, stay.
Are you looking for something else?
They're looking for a motion.
Anything else for you?
No.
I'm emotionally accept the...
Revised?
Yeah, revised conditional use permit with conditions.
Anyone state those conditions again one more time?
One of them was... Well, we got to go through the whole list of conditions. From the zoning laws, they just consider it.
Like, oh, since we've done this, we haven't did statements, right?
Yeah. Right. So I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay. And, okay, let him. Eighty something? You have a get?
Um, get.
Okay. Uh, 96, maybe?
Standards applicable to conditional uses.
I think that's pretty much. Alright, I'll read through them, and then we'll agree to them or not agree to them. Is it a standard applicable to the conditional uses, and A is, the use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat? You're in agreement that that's probably true? Right?
Right.
You already shot out there. B, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. Anybody? Yeah, I don't think there's anything nearby there. C, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. B, yes. D, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance. The traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with the performance standards in this ordinance.
Yes.
The site, where it be, the site design in, is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. I don't know if it's yes or if it's not applicable, we don't have, it's not a flooded zone, anything.
They do have a little bit there, but it doesn't matter.
Okay, F, adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. And we have refueling? We, I mean, we dealt with that in the earlier one.
It is internally drained.
It's internally drained, um, there's port bodies, I guess, assumed?
That's correct. But there is a part of what, what I think.
And refueling?
We have quality fuel come in every other day.
There's not fuel in on the site.
Yeah.
What they do is they bring it in, there's no fuel stored on the site.
That was one of the conditions that we originally.
Part of your vision approval was to appear to the user.
Yeah, okay. We are at G, adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. And that would be yes, based on the earlier approval. H, a stormwater drainage system capable of handling 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. Everything is internally drained anyway. So even with a 25-year storm, I don't think that's an issue, so I think that'd be yes if you're in agreement with me.
Yeah.
Alright, I, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made.
This is where I'd like to pass up the board, put in the condition that, um, within the next five years, the front approximately 11 acres, um, has more substantial vegetation on it, including, uh, trees within, you know, approximate 20 by 20 spacing. And this can be accomplished, however the owners care to, whether through individual plantings or seeding with, uh, white pine, red pine, and other native species they feel would grow well on the site, maybe grape arch. And this would help, uh, prevent, uh, wind or erosion, we saw a lot of dust when we were up there. And just help the general aesthetics of the site and overwhelm, you know? Just the, you know, better well-being of the site to be revegetated properly.
Alright, how do you, how do you guys feel about the condition, adding the condition? You don't like it? Okay, voice, tell me what you think.
Well, because I don't think that it's applicable to what we're talking about. I mean, and if they have a bond, but the state has a bond, that money is there to revegetate and take care of any problems, so I don't, I don't see the, the need for it.
The state won't take that money to revegetate unless they feel like it.
Unless they feel that it is not been done properly.
Right, true.
So that's what, that's what the bond is for.
No, the bond is for, if they, they for some reason pull out of the site and haven't revegetated it, the state has money to come in and do the job they were supposed to do.
Right.
Yoli, Dan?
Yeah, I think, like, in fairness to the other pits too, I think we have, you know, put a, um, plea out to other pits as well, to pay more attention to how they're revegetating, like, to have, it's fair to the other pits in town too. And, um, and I think it makes sense. So is that, sorry?
Yeah. Dan, comment? Okay, so, so are you making a motion to add that condition?
Yes, so, I will make a motion that we add a condition that, um, Monarch Meadows or, and/or Quikrete Industries there, um, works further to revegetate the front, what I'm calling the front 11 acres, um, adjacent there, little building as we go in. Um, and within the next five years to have, uh, growth of trees, native trees on that area.
Second?
Yeah, um, second, I guess my thought is, uh, wondering about if being so specific to an area of, rather just revegetating in general. Because then we, I thought we didn't talk with, with them in the very beginning about revegetation. Was it just about the topsoil piece of it?
I can only read to you what is in the minutes.
Okay.
We have those two sets of minutes.
This is November 5th of 2015. I mean, it seems like we talk about revegetation whenever we talk about pits, so I can't be specific to.
And I'm sure Tom's saying a lot, having a lot to say about it as well, looking for original.
Well?
Well, that's a motion.
Alright, and seconded, Yoli?
Uh, yes, but I'm wondering about the idea of making, like, not specific to this, but like, to the, more to the, in general, to a pit.
Oh, to the whole, whole pit.
I'd be revegetating to consider pines and more natural.
Oh, absolutely, I'd love to ask them to revegetate the whole pit eventually in the, over the course of the lifetime of the project. But right now, I, I feel like this area is an area that is not gonna be touched anytime soon, and that's a good, good area to begin focusing on. It already has some preliminary vegetation that's gonna help mulch the ground under the trees and make it easier for trees to take in that area, I think. Whereas these other areas are kind of more active, actively open right now.
But they may not even be happy to revegetate this right now, they want, they want the 30 acres over.
True, true, yeah, that would be.
I mean, I guess I tend to agree with you guys, I, I know Tom, you're not too happy with the idea of, of the revegetation, but I think this maybe is an opportunity for us, since you guys are looking for something additional, for us to slide in something that, for whatever reason, doesn't show up in the old minutes. Um, you know, to me, it should be in those old minutes, going back to November of 2015. Why it's not there, I don't know. But, in, in my mind, this condition is, is not really all that much, maybe I'm wrong about that, but that's my sense, and I think it's a, a reasonable condition. And that being said, I guess I'm gonna ask for a show of hands to decide whether or not we're going to add this condition or not. So while in favor of, of, uh, Gavin's motion, raise your hand. One, two, three, all opposed. One, two, okay, so it passes 3-2, second condition. Alright, so now I think we are on J. There is adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes. You guys have a knockoff up there too, right, according to the original ones, that's still in place? Okay. Um, the provisions, the provisions for the buffer strips and onsite landscape, you provide an adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development, such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like. Um, well, we certainly have dealt with the noise, that's what this whole thing is all about. You know, the dust part, you know, some of that will be taken care of with condition number two. The other ones maybe are not applicable, so I think the answer would be yes to K, unless you have argument there. L, all performance standards in the ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. Yes. M, archaeological, historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected, and I think that's a, an A. Don't think there's any signs of anything up there, old.
So, um, on I, will that be shown as true with conditions?
Yes. Yes. Okay. Any other issues, any other conditions? Is there, is there a motion then to, um, approve the revised conditional use with additional conditions?
So what about the other motion?
Yeah, so I, sorry, I meant that, that'd be my motion.
Oh, we've already done it, sorry.
Yeah, and Gavin's seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, sorry about that. Okay. So, any other comments then on the motion on the table, you wanna read that one more time?
Um, the only, um, move to approve the revised conditional, conditional use permit application, and Gavin seconded it. But that's how she stated it, do you wanna say with conditions?
With, with, with conditions, is that right?
Can I put that in?
Sure, yes. You're, you're okay with, as a seconded, putting that in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, passes by, well.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, a lot of good one on there. Alright, so, so it's passed, the next step for these guys would be to come back to you, Ken, or, or they just move on, they go by?
How do you want, yeah, how do you want to talk in the next? Do you wanna do it just with the fact being recorded, or?
Probably, um, give us an updated plan and we can get it signed at the next meeting.
Okay.
You still have a copy of the original? You still have a copy of the original, uh?
True.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the one I had on board here, yeah, and so we'll just make a new, uh, uh, condition. Give me the wording on that condition, would you please?
I'll email it to you tomorrow?
Yeah.
I'll copy Bob, just to make sure I got it perfect.
But, thank you.
Have a good evening.
See ya.
Thank you. Alright, thanks guys. Okay, next on the agenda, we are, well, let me throw it out to you. Are, are we able to talk, to see us about the site visit tonight? Let's look at it here.
I, I would be willing to go over it.
Okay.
They've been waiting through the meeting and.
Yep.
But, um, you can have a look.
Oh, right, you guys had us, you guys had us.
On this, this one right here.
Oh, right, that's right, I'm looking at you like. Uh, no, you weren't there. Okay, so, so, um, Jason Roy is here, Tyler is here too, um, who's helping him set this, this whole thing up, this is a garage, uh, kind of a deal. And if you look at it carefully, uh, some of you, I think, maybe saw, maybe everybody saw the map, you can see that the, uh, the darker square in the middle is the proposed garage. And the greenish part, that's to the upper part of the screen, is part of an existing garage. Uh, the lake is to the top.
Oh, to the top.
Okay, the lake is to the top, I don't know if, if you can slide that down, you can see where, what we're talking about, but. So there's the lake. And if, and if, it was on stagecoach, uh, just drive lane, whatever, whatever that case. So, so I think if I'm right, Jason, um, you propose sliding it back, putting a garage in, so that the existing driveway for the garage would go straight in.
Like it is, correct.
Yep, and then curl around into the hill, past the 100-foot mark, an additional piece of this garage.
Correct.
Okay. You, you may be able to see, if we go back to the other plan, you'll, uh, if you slide it up, you can see the funny rectangle in a minute.
It's on the site.
We want to open them.
Alright, so here, it's this far where you're only.
From what is this?
This far right here.
And, and this.
Oh, this and that?
Yeah.
Okay. But our, our issue is this part right here, that's inside the 100 feet. Which is the red line. Okay? And here, this is a hill that's going up. Um, toward, toward electrical wires. I don't remember what you guys said, as far as how close the proposed garage would be to those electrical wires. You'd have a basic.
It'll be within, 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 within the limits allowed.
Yeah.
It won't be as close as my neighbors.
It won't be as close as your neighbors. Well, here's the wires. This one, and this one, two. Yeah, but here it's close.
Yeah.
So is that other little building on different property there?
And behind it? That's been torn down, that's, that's the neighbor's property that's been torn down and rebuilt.
Any other comments then from people, um, as far as, what do you think about the proposal? So, so the, the idea of 220, you, you essentially want to knock off only about two feet of the garage closest to the lake?
Eight feet.
Eight feet.
Going from 63.5 to 71.
Right now, it's 32 feet and width towards the lake, and we're talking about coming back to 24.
So like up to that second door?
Uh, yeah, the first, to the right side of the first door.
It does say 221 feet on that jaw. So we're pushing to come into 71.
I'm trying to read what that's.
Yeah, that's it, that's a confusion service, I'll be honest.
So eight feet further away from the lake?
Correct.
What's anybody's feeling after being out there?
Seems like what we usually get these sort of cases, we look at it, we're like, okay, they wanna expand the garage, they wanna relocate it. Can we put it behind the 100-foot line? And in this case, we absolutely can, so, I mean, it seems to me like we would just do as we did with every similar case before this, and ask them to put it behind the 100-foot line and, and then go ahead and, and design it however they want, to their parts of light behind the 100-foot line.
I mean, I sense our mandate, if we ever have a mandate, um, in, in this planning board, since I've been on it, is to move back, move back, move back, um, when it comes to the lake, if, if at all possible. I'm not sure about the hill and whether it's possible, I'm not a, a, you know, a person in construction. I would be questioning that. I know in other situations where we've had hills, maybe not sustained, but we have not moved back as far as what we would like to do because of hills. So I'm throwing that out to people as to what they, what they think about that thought.
So being out there, how much like disturbance did it feel like it was gonna make, carving into the hill there?
Well, there's trees out there, I'm not sure they're the greatest, healthiest trees, but.
They, but then, there are those few.
Those trees. You can walk through it. I mean, it's not like it's, uh, land that you'd have to go, you know, like that to get through, you could easily walk through it.
Alright, steep.
Yeah, it's steep.
Well, it seems like their existing proposal to put this addition onto the garage is gonna eliminate the hill regardless of, um.
Right, like the hesitation would be about disturbing the hill, but if that's already part of the plan, then.
The other issue that Jason has, um, is the ability to The other issue that Jason has is the ability to use his existing driveway to back straight into the garage with something perhaps that's on a trailer. And I just throw that out as a, as a, something that we were discussing when we were on the site visit.
The current garage does retain, there is a, it's almost like a hill all the way wrapped around it, so when that garage, if the, if that current garage was gone, you still have another hill to deal with, more backing, so to speak. So that, that current garage is acting as a retaining wall now of, on two sides, which the proposal would continue to retain the hill.
How big would the retaining walls be around the garage that you would need?
Well, it would be, it would be the foundation wall of the garage, not an additional retaining wall.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any like little cliffs or anything?
No.
It wouldn't have any retaining walls on the garage.
Right now, my five-year-old son can walk off the ground onto the roof, and it's not the best situation currently, because it's backfilled right to the roof line.
So would this, this proposed part that's going into the hill, would it be sort of on the same level as what you're seeing right now, so that it's all...
You know, how do you envision the ground floor of the, the larger back part of the L, so to speak? It would be in this general area?
Correct.
Where would you envision the parking height of that garage to be? Would it be at the existing patron level, or would it be...
Ideally, I wouldn't mind with civil consultants being involved in dealing with water runoff, because you have two roofs coming together with the driveway, to elevate the floor 18 inches or whatnot, to be able to work the water away from the lake, and do a catch basin and whatnot, and then that other garage, it would come off at an angle off that corner into the hill.
Right now, that garage is too low, everything flows towards it.
It's like all went along...
So your, your parking, parking height of the garage would be elevated in the...
Potentially, yeah.
And if we were able to tear that down and rebuild, elevating that would help everything.
Like right now, all went along, the garage door would just freeze to the ground, and you have to just keep putting in on blocks, and at some point, it's useless.
Oh, because you have all the, the draining right into...
Right into the garage.
Yeah.
Tyler, the eight feet that you were just showing me on the map, is that...
Approximately to the right side of that door.
The right side of the door. Okay. So here's the eight-foot back that we were basically talking about, so the garage would begin there and go that way.
Correct.
Okay, so what's the argument for having any part of it in front of the 100-foot line?
What, the question was, what's the argument for having any part inside?
If I can't tear it down and rebuild, I can use my 30% expansion to cross the 100-foot and tie into the addition, and then I need to replace, to repair the one back block wall that's failing, and as long as I stay within 50% of the value of the building, that can be done as well simultaneously, I believe, and then obviously the whole structure where it is, and tie it into the new addition.
Okay, I'm sorry, say that part again?
So, I can increase...
So I can use this all in new information?
I'm sorry. I can increase the current square footage volume by 30% where it is, to cross the foot and a half I need to go over the 100-foot line, to tie into the, the other piece that I'd like to add. The back, the whole foundation wall is crumbling, it's old, so as long as I stay within 50% of the value, I can repair that portion of the structure and leave the remaining structure, rework the roof into the new piece.
The goal is, since the building's not safe and not built well and whatnot, is to tear it down, rebuild new, have everything safe, up to code. If we don't get a D.O.K., we're going to try and piecemeal it and get back a little bit further with our expansion to tie into the addition, but we're going to still leave that garage there, so it's still going to be that 63 and a half to the water. If we tear down and rebuild a better structure, we're going to be less non-conforming, I believe, is the way you say it?
Yeah, it would be 71 and a half feet.
Correct, and we'll have a up-to-code garage at the right height, and we'll handle all the stormwater and everything else.
The current floor has a drain in it that we're not sure where that goes to.
Where everything even goes under there.
Can you go back to the picture again, Ken? So, so you envision the new garage to be a garage door and then a walk-in entry door next to it?
Correct.
And then still similar, that space to the right, or can we push back a little bit further, keep it still at the level of the garage, I mean, of, of the driveway, move the group, the garage door over this way, so that you could still back something in relatively easily? I mean, can we gain more than eight feet?
Potentially some.
I mean, was eight feet arbitrary?
Well, at eight feet, at that point after that, then I need another retaining wall. The hill starts jump, heading uphill in the back of it, so then we're going to have to address a poured wall in the back to retain the hill of some sort behind on that portion. After eight feet, the hill on the, behind the garage...
You're talking on this side?
Correct, starts running, then you've got to start dealing with that retainment.
Well, maybe the board wants to consider if it's not a definite move it beyond the 100-foot, get better plans, get more clearer plans. I mean, if it's a definite move it behind the 100-foot, then you can advise him and, so he doesn't invest a lot of money into some better site plan, uh, grading plan.
What was your recommendation, Ken?
This map isn't accurate, it's been changed since, this road's been erased, and this line goes back here, this line comes, this triangle becomes part of it, there is a set of power lines come back here. It's hard to leave it wherever it is if there's room to relocate it with the precedent the board set in the past.
Right, so I'm sorry, how do they, what is their access? What do they come in?
Uh, comes down this road here, and comes down and around.
And so brush kind of ends right there?
It's pretty heavily vegetated.
The whole...
The power line remains like 15 thousand.
So that's, that's been a mess, right?
You can't, you can't get over there to where Dromi's property is anyway.
Yeah. So another point you were making is that if you tear down the existing garage and replace it with something else, it would be more environmentally friendly to the lake?
Roofline and the closest to the lake would be shedding away from the lake versus now it's currently towards the lake.
Like he said, there's drains in there that we don't even know where they go, you know?
You know, the one drain that was there in the driveway had drained right out to the retaining wall into the lake.
Sure.
And it's going to...
I mean, it's old, that's what they did.
So that property actually extends back on the other side, behind the power lines?
Yes, and the one thing that makes me nervous near where they closed the road, I purchased title insurance for the property, the one thing that they would not insure is the way they closed the road, so...
So you're not guaranteed it'll open up again at some point? So you can't have the...
But this, and this hills and stuff, and we have young kids, so it's, living there year-round, it's not, it makes it tough to access the garage up the hill.
Is there a wood association?
There is for Stonewall Drive that, it stops at that three-way split, and then I maintain down to the house.
Well, it looks like it falls under the expansion of structure of existing prior September 20, 2000, level of resource protection, but it's outside, or lots of same reasons I'm sure, so... I'm looking at page, what is it, say six of, yeah, page six, C at the top, and it's pretty, it seems like it's pretty much continued upon the foundation. It says, whenever a new enlarged or replacement foundation is constructed under a non-conforming structure, the structure and new foundation must be placed such that the setback requirement is met to the greatest practical extent as determined by the planning board. So, that seems like that pretty much hits where we are. The foundation is no good, they need a new foundation and...
But it is repairable if I decide not to tear it down, as long as I don't affect more than 50% of the value.
You're saying...
It says, whenever a new enlarged or replacement foundation, so if you enlarge it, that's going to be triggering it as well.
You're triggering it to what?
Uh, to that best practical, practicable location.
Which you're calling where?
Well, I would say you'd be able to fit it behind the 100-foot line.
Now, Ken, if I'm wrong, though, when we talked to D.E.P., we can replace that back wall, because it's the one wall, and get it behind the 100 and leave it where it is, correct?
You can replace a wall, and it's not a foundation, it's just an interpretation we made, and then you're running that five-year cycle.
But it's got this enlargement, isn't it?
But that's going to be part of your 50%, removing the value.
Correct. But it is possible to leave it where it is, fix that back wall, and get behind the 100, that'll... So just, which, and again, I understand how well you're reading that, but it just sounds crazy to me where you don't know where drains are, and we're going to become...
But that's...
...informed.
And the property owner now has more investment into that lake staying clean than anybody else in this room, to you maybe, you know? If that lake goes bad, it's his investment now, just as well as anything else, so to say, I'll fix the drains if I can move, if I can build what I want, I mean, I don't...
No, we're just saying we can better them.
Oh, you can better them tomorrow.
Oh, sure.
Just as well, too, so I mean, yes, I understand where you're trying, what you're trying to get, but I just also know the 30 other relocations the board does every year, and the 20 that doesn't even come here because it's beyond the 100-foot, it's a tough one, that's why you guys did the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much the only time we don't ask it to be, you know, put fully behind the 100-foot line is if the septic system is back there, or there's just something, or the road is there, that's a big one.
There's a reason, a site condition.
Or there's, the power lines are right there, you just can't, can't physically move it back, but in this case, there's plenty of room, so...
But it's just the access of the width to turn in with anything of...
Right, no, I, I hear what you're saying, I just, you know, when I think about all the other people, we've gone and looked at their buildings and...
And that's what even makes it tougher, because it's only a garage, not to belittle the garage by any means, but if it's a primary structure and you had no place, there's much more leeway, I would think, so it's hard when it's an accessory building, it makes it more difficult.
So what did it look like on top, behind?
Uh, the grade dropped probably 10 feet roughly from here down to here with the U-shaped driveway coming in from, I think it came down, looked this way and came in at the...
And there's no road behind threshold?
This road allegedly doesn't exist anymore right here, that point comes up in the...
And then you say that the property actually comes over that?
Uh, the property comes to Stonewall now.
Our biggest, the biggest thing with the utility lines is our biggest constraint.
So it's, it's, it looks like the utility lines are, I mean, I'm guessing here in the range of 60 feet to the, to the power lines from what would be the existing corners of the garage. You guys in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Somewhere in that range?
Yeah.
60-ish?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's 57 and a half on one corner and 67 and a half on the other.
Well, I mean, maybe you think about it, I'm not saying we have to vote tonight. We can, we can think about it. Or, if you're confident and want to, certainly be an entertaining vote.
Just the current situation is making it tough where everything's downhill into the garage during the time, that's...
I wasn't there, so it's so hard to hear.
Well, I thought everything just kind of funnels down into that driveway, into the garage area.
I mean, I might be willing to go 12 feet back instead of eight, puts basically to the front corner where that wreath is, to the beginning.
Somewhere in there?
Yeah, exactly, I think it's 12.
So if that wreath up there is almost, what's, what's that right there, is there a line there, or is that...
It is a jog back, it goes from like 30 feet to 28 feet in depth at that point.
So moving it back to that point in time, you'd gain a dozen feet in, and get mitigation?
And it would at least allow to be able to just pull something straight in without trying to back around a corner, blind with a trailer potentially.
So there's the...
So the bump in 12, yeah.
That steps in 20.
Should we get rid of that old bungee?
Would it make sense to get more information from social consultants?
You can ask for a, some elevations or a, a contract plan or something if you want.
Relatively sure there's no ledge in that hillside?
Pretty sure it's gravel, from what I've seen, but... But it pretty much on the back right, the bottom right corner of the current garage is, it's an eight-foot wall and it's backfilled, the ground right is right to the roof, so I mean, it's pretty much an eight-foot to 10-foot elevation change from front to back. And I would have civil consultants in, working with the elevations prior to doing any work with the runoff. But at this point, I haven't had anything drafted, because I didn't want to go one way with it if I can, so...
Yes, no? Me?
That I'm torn about, because, I mean, I don't like to ask a homeowner to spend any more than they have to.
If it's approved, he's going to have to do the drawings anyways.
Right.
The stormwater management plans, the elevations.
And those would have to be approved?
Through me.
Yeah.
You know?
Because I'm reading on page seven about, about relocation, talks about replacing trees and stuff like that, you have to be part of the plan.
Yeah, we go, always have to go through that on every project on the shoreline with Ken and...
Yeah.
I mean, if revegetation and stormwater is a concern, I mean, Ken could probably answer that most, every project I've done around the lakes is, he's smiling, but it's done to his standards.
Trying to be raw.
You know, we don't cut corners on anything like that, so...
How did I hear that? Does that mean you've cut corners of other things?
No. You can't cut corners in...
Good to hear, good to hear, right answer, right answer.
Now that Brenda's on board.
All right then, so where are you guys at? Somebody's got to do something here.
I think I abstained just because I was on the sidewalk.
Easy there.
I'm overwatching.
I hope I won't be...
This is, this is difficult, so...
It was easy who would be here.
Right. I liked the idea of getting more information. Just really look at it with the...
A grading plan showing the contours existing proposed and some elevations. So at least you're considering allowing, um, I think we're up to twelve feet. Stepping it back.
Mm-hmm.
Going to seventy-six, I think.
I like that idea.
Seventy-six, six, sort of seventy-six.
That's only fourteen more feet.
Behind the hundred.
Seventy-six, yeah.
No, right. Twenty-four.
Oh, seventy-six to, yeah, to twenty-four feet, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
But you can see it, like, the angles don't be true.
What comment about feet back? You have twenty feet ahead.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just saying if you chop twelve feet off it, we've just come up with that you'd be twenty-four feet within the hundred still.
Yes.
We've lost him there.
Yeah.
You're guessing it would still be not within the, not within the twenty-four feet.
Right. Oh, okay.
But now, correct me if I'm wrong, we come back twelve feet and, and we're going to enlarge the part that's inside of the hundred by thirty percent?
Correct.
Right?
Very well. Just, just reworking the roof to tie it up.
Just the roof, yeah. It's the same footprint has to stay there. Would just be a different...
Twenty by thirty roughly?
Correct. It would just be a different...
Instead of a hip roof like that, a gable roof going the other way.
Twenty-eight by twenty, this area here.
Right.
Basically eliminating that.
Mm-hmm. So are you guys in, okay with that, going back and getting some plans showing us the elevation, showing us the contours?
I can. I mean, I can tell you right now, it's, it's an eight-foot elevation change. It's backfilled to the roof. It's pretty much, it's an eight-foot change from front to back. Um, it could be several weeks by the time I get it done and back, you know?
I'm not sensing we're ready to make a vote.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's my sense here. I mean, I throw it out a couple of times to see if there's a vote up here, and it doesn't seem like there is.
In the meantime, I can go out there with Yoli, too, and just show the site.
Get her back in the hot seat again?
Get her, get her back out of that conference zone. My veteran member.
Take time with you, too.
Yeah. Enchanted.
Enchanted.
Yeah, that's right. Enchanted, too. Sorry. All right, so I think that's where we're at at this point, guys.
So what are you asking for? Uh, some elevations proposed and a grading plan. Existing grading and proposed grading plan on top of that.
Anything else anybody would like to see to make a decision a little easier?
And all you need to see is for this twenty by twenty-eight, correct?
Yes, if we are at least in agreement that the first, we were coming back twelve feet.
I don't know. It's kind of like we want to see the whole project.
That's what I kind of thought.
Just because of the...
Oh, the addition, too?
Yeah, just 'cause of the way the water flows off it and the drive, how the driveway's connected with the, the new garage doors and like where the water flow off, you know, I don't know. It just seems like it would be one unit we'd be dealing with, not...
I understand. The only problem is now you're back to this, making the homeowners spend money that may not go through, so it's, you're not guaranteeing anything, but we're taking the time to get all these elevations, everything where we may not get the okay and then...
At least it's not a definite no. Agreed.
Well, I don't, yeah, I mean, well, if there's a definite no, I guess.
Definitely no, so you're definitely not wasting your money. It's...
Some more, but...
That's one way to look at it. And you're gonna do something there?
Yes.
One way or the other.
One way or the other.
All right, we good then? All right, you guys good then at the end?
Yeah, I've run out of ideas, so yeah.
So, so you don't think that that can be done in two weeks?
Try.
Yeah. Well, just keep these guys informed, whether you're gonna, you know, perhaps be here at the, uh, next meeting, so we know if you're on the agenda or not, and then...
I mean, how official of a topography do you need? Survey plans or...
You've got a survey you're working from anyways.
Right.
Who has all your data. Uh, some grade planes showing which way and how this is being cut in and basically the removal of that whole front area with the angle and just a simple elevation or two, I would think. So the board can get a better idea. I can picture what's there, but sometimes others need a, a picture to look at to understand it.
But I don't need a draft of proposal of the whole building, though?
I wouldn't get into, uh, structural plans with two by this and two by that. No, definitely not. Just conceptual plans. Might need to be able to take a picture and Photoshop it in.
So Tyler has any questions? He can touch base with you.
With Brenda?
Yeah. With Brenda? I should be asking Brenda.
I'll have questions.
Okay, all right. I mean, it seems like every time I come in here, he's here.
In the candy dishes.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna get some rollos, I wish.
All right, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda. Are we to Crotto?
Crotto.
Crotto. Chipmunks lane.
Is that okay if I bug out?
Yep. All right, saluted.
Yeah, I'll talk to you later.
All right, so tell us about Crotto.
Crotto is a removing fifty percent of the value, probably not, but they thought they'd go through the relocation process to, yeah, straight down to the lake. Looks like a cliff. So that's the existing structure. They're doing a major renovation, so there's three reasons why we, the board needs to relocate. Total rip down, rebuild, putting a foundation underneath, or the worst one, the hardest one to regulate is removing fifty percent of the value. Um, so they're looking at a major renovation. They're gonna reuse the existing foundation. They're just gonna gut this out and go, and there is no place to relocate it. That's why they wanted to come through the relocation process and just get it approved. If it's a fifty percent, removing fifty percent of the value, they need to get an appraiser and an adjuster, and they value the building. So like the windows worth twenty-three dollars and the chimney's worth eighteen. You value all that, and as it goes in the dumpster, they, you know, it gets tallied up, and the appraiser sets a value at the building so they know, don't go over the fifty percent, forty-nine point nine percent, or, or, you know, they'll max it right up to it. So in this case, versus spending the money on the appraiser and the adjuster and worrying about it and then going over the fifty percent, because you know, as in renovations, when you start ripping apart, it's hard to stop. It's, it's a huge snowball.
So, so do you know the appraisal value of that house?
Hold on a second.
Well, we just want to, there's no place to move it.
There's no place to relocate it, no. So the appraisal, so versus doing that whole fifty percent and the appraisal and getting stuck in all that, uh, they're just gonna relocate it. Or go through the best practical location.
Go through the process.
Which is gonna be right where it is?
Correct, 'cause they're, for one, they're using the foundation.
And their septic's right behind you or...
We do have a site plan, but they're... Thirty-one feet to the center of the road, so there is no relocating back. They do well on the other side of the lake, but that's a cliff that goes down the other side, so it's a big hog back that'll be a finger out there. So there is no place to slide it back from the lake, and the two sides are both okay, so there is no place to relocate it. And they are reusing the foundation, and the whole shell is going to stay anyways.
How far back from the lake are they now? Six feet.
Fifty-something.
Yeah. So don't want picture though, it's amazing. It's fifty-something feet over, you could jump it a little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure could, yeah.
We did have a little issue with the deck on the front of it. Uh, it got enlarged over the years without permits, so it gets shrunk back to what it's supposed to be. Uh, it only came out to that beam, and then somebody replaced it, and now it extends closer to the lake, so they're gonna cut the deck back to where the sides are supposed to be.
Did you see the distance to the water?
Site plan thirty-four point six.
What do we see on the left-hand side of this picture? Is that part of the property?
Right here?
Yes.
Little shed down by the water.
With the deck.
With the deck.
Yeah.
But usually if it's got moss mold and not put together with this, all the screws and stuff they use now, I can pretty much say it's been there for a while.
Have we been there? Seen what we've seen in this place?
No, I don't think so. We've done, um, four, five on this road in the past couple of years.
Maybe looking down, like, you know, from the other next door or something, so... So essentially what you're looking for then is the okay to go forward with the best possible location based on recommendation that, um, there's no place to move it?
Correct. It's already within the road setback by fourteen feet, I think.
But we'd still do all the, uh, additional mitigation of the water and all that? That's, that's automatic today?
Yeah.
Any other issues anybody has? Then is there a motion to accept, uh, Ken's, um, suggestions?
Make a motion, hold on a second.
Is there a second? All those, well, and before we go back to...
The conditions.
The condition being the stormwater mitigation that Brenda's got down. Anything else that we need as far as the conditions?
Uh, we might as well put the, um, reduction in the size of the deck back to, just might as well put that weight in as a condition.
And we're not concerned about this deck down here?
No, it's old enough that...
Could have been whatever.
It's, it may be legal.
And I'm looking to do it to the...
No.
Yeah.
No. But anytime somebody with the shoreline zoning project comes in, we are required to take a look and get any violation that's there removed and come into compliance.
Did you suggest that they add the additional square footage to the house? Get it away from the lake? I don't know how big this thing is. The shed that's here, uh, it's gotta be right on the water, right?
Fairly close.
I mean, is that a reasonable thought?
To relocate the shed?
No. To eliminate the shed and take the square footage and include it into, you know, the, the renovations of the house.
They weren't proposing it, so I'd say that's beyond our scope.
I'd love to get rid of something as close to the water. Is that any good?
That's usually a good benefit to go after when they don't have enough square foot and cubic feet, but they're really not doing much about thirty percent expansion in the structure.
Oh, they're not?
It's mostly just a gut and renovate. We're doing the roof line a little bit.
Where is that thing on the picture? Is it, I didn't see it.
I didn't, yeah.
It's like this part about landscaping in the front of the, front of the place.
Shrubs or wild stuff?
It just looks like retain, quite a few, still retaining walls in the middle of the house. That can really be down there.
Yeah. If they were ripping it down, putting the foundation in, we'd have a lot more, um, stormwater management issues being done.
All right then. Is there, uh, is there, ready to vote?
Need a second.
Uh, do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think you have. No, it was, yeah.
Thank you.
All those are here? Okay, next on the agenda. I have some stuff around here from Leaky or Leaky or something or other.
Right.
Do you have any of that tonight?
We're doing this next time. A lot of those things called the trappers.
Trappers. Yeah, 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 the trappers. Do the right thing.
Automotive, automotive repair facility.
Yeah.
Automotive repair.
So this is the pre-application he's given us, and he's given us a little, uh, lay down. This is a home occupation down on the hopper road. Uh, was hoping to set a site watch for, before our next meeting. Can we go down, take a look at the facility? I've got a survey plan for it. Uh, we're gonna clean up the narrative just a little bit, maybe.
You mean the narrative?
Um, can you get the other one out there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yours, mine, or yours?
I think it's yours.
I'm hungry, I haven't heard about yours.
So I thought I'd give you the information tonight. You can kind of review it. We can do the site walk, meet with them next time, and then just get a, draw a public hearing for me.
Um, so we're talking about a possible site visit on the nineteenth?
Correct.
Everybody good with six o'clock?
Six P. on the sidewalk. Seems to be working.
Well... And be there five forty-five as per usual? In my case, I think I'm on.
Uh, it's similar to the sidewalk today, right at the street. Shouldn't take very long, and we almost don't even have to get out of the cab.
Don, do you know where it is?
Um...
Right down the street from us?
I can't picture it.
Well, you get down there by Healy, look left.
Oh, okay.
And you'll see, uh, I, my, like, literally a one-level garage. Just peek on it.
I've never really noticed that. It could be a, a business.
It hasn't been a business for a number of years. I don't think it's been a business since we've been up here, ten years.
Yeah, maybe that's why I've never, never really noticed it.
Okay, so two weeks from now, we have that. That's what I looked at. I guess it looks taller there in the picture.
Yeah.
Wow, I've never even...
I don't remember seeing that.
But it is set back off as well.
I haven't noticed it.
The house is further to the left, I think, and closer.
I must have been looking for odd holes.
You're just watching the road, good driver. Yeah, so that's the garage right there. That's the house.
Trying to picture where that, exactly that is.
Healy ways right across the street, flat ground, just down a little bit more.
And you're going down that hill, and before you blink, you're at the bottom.
Yeah, it's got that little sand pit across the street.
Yeah, so you'd see it if you were going up the hill.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah. You would be more physical.
Twice I tried to show it to my wife today, and both times it was like I passed it before I could see it. Oh, it's a mistake.
And that little shed he used to store his gravel equipment in there?
Yeah.
And his loader?
Yeah.
And it's a different owner across the street now, has that bed.
Well, Healy doesn't have it anymore?
No, it was her. Hop gravel LLC.
Interesting. Couple of other things before we hang it up here. Um, there was a letter that came to me, and some of you guys may know about this. Apparently there's a place called Hitten Cove, uh, on Square Pond, and, um, it's, if you know Square Pond at all, down by the islands on the, what I'm gonna call the north side, Indian Village Road comes in from Square Pond Road, and it goes along, it comes to a dead end. West Shore Drive comes the other way, and there's a space in between. Apple Road comes down from a third section, and they never meet. But that piece of property in there is owned by somebody, and apparently what they're, and it all is in Chapley. And, and there is discussion about that being subdivided and, um, sold, um, to individual lots, perhaps, I'm hearing three. Um, and I'm also hearing through letters from people who are against all of this. Not again that we have anything necessary to say, except that appears that there's some discussion about connecting roads. I don't know how serious the connection of connecting roads is, but I would imagine that if they're connecting roads, that it might impact us because West Shore Drive is gonna be, you know, inactive. Do you know anything more about the road reconstruction there? Is that really on the table?
I thought it was more driveway than anything, but the road would not connect. It's not gonna be a through road, is what I've heard.
These people seem to think the red is.
The sky is, the sky is falling.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe it's off the road nearby, maybe you felt.
Right, I think the roads were to connect, they would have to come back through, uh, road commissioners and the selectmen and the staff, but we'll do.
One more thing is for new members, there is, um, a planning board, um, for, for, I guess workshop, that is scheduled in Portland, and it is July twenty-sixth. It's, um, I don't know, I think it's like at four o'clock in the afternoon, remember Gavin, who went for it, uh, maybe it was eight or something, they, they served lunch, um, but, but it was meaningful.
Is it the same one that was in Sanford not long ago?
It.
Probably.
Did you go to that one?
I went to the one in Sanford.
Okay, so then maybe you have been to that one. How about Joyce, do you know if Joyce did?
I don't think she did.
No, I think Yoli and Link, uh, went, the one to the one I went, so it would be.
So potentially Joyce and, and you, Don. And, and there's a fifty-five dollar charge that you guys pick up out of your budgets, I assume, or our budgets, or whosoever budgets, but.
Taken out of your pay.
Yeah, whatever. And, uh, registration is at four there, but they must need to know ahead of time, correct?
Correct, so, I mean, we don't need to know tonight, the middle of April, the end of April.
Yep, so whether you can go or not go, uh, kind of a deal, and that way we'll know and I'll get this information to Joyce. Yep, okay, perfect. See what else I have on here? Oh, and next meeting, which I believe is gonna be like something around the nineteenth, Richard Nass is going to speak to us about the marijuana ordinance. They are crafting one, he and, um, other people, don't know who they are, crafting a marijuana ordinance, uh, that is going to be on the ballot for the June election, right before the town meeting. And, um, apparently that's already been okayed upstairs. Again, I'm not speaking by talking to anybody upstairs, but I'm hearing that. And, uh, he, he would like to come before us and just kind of give us a, a heads up as to what's going on. I talked to Ken about it, he seemed to think that it really is not something that's gonna go in our ordinance, per se. Something that perhaps would be similar to something that the selectmen have when it comes to alcohol. So anyway, I throw that out to you. And we'll put that on the agenda for, for the next meeting. Anything else? Ken, do you have anything?
No.
Alright, so we have, we have a site visit, take a look at the stuff about the site visit ahead of time, a B plus, and give some thought to Jason and Tyler's, uh, deal that we'll attempt to try and take care of next time, if they can get the information to us by next time.
We'll hold a spot on the agenda for them, if they make it, they make it, if not, we'll drop them and put somebody else in.
Anything else, anybody? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second? Done?
Done, we're ready for the second.
Alright. Thanks for doing it.